Okay, so it is now officially seven o'clock, so I am going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting of October fifteenth for the city of Minutrista. So, welcome all of you this evening, thank you for coming. We have some special guests with us this evening. From Mound Westanka, Ms. Klein and former council member Ron Klein, thank you for coming and joining us, and hopefully you'll learn a lot. So, with that, I'm going to ask that you remind everybody, turn your cellphones off or on airplane mode or in silence, so they don't disrupt our proceedings and our first order of business, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
[Inaudible]
So again, welcome also to those watching on YouTube at a later date. So first, let's start with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, Shannon Bruce. Absent this evening is John Chumperlin, and then we have our engineer Allison Fousky, and with WSB, our city clerk Chris Lindquist, and our director of administration Cassandra Tabor. To my right, we have our city administrator Mike Barone, finance director Brian Grimm, community development director David Abel, with Kennedy and Graven, our attorney is Ron Beatty, and on the end, we have our chief of police Paul Falls. So with that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh and one absent. Thank you. So tonight, we have two, actually three special presentations, but two of them are very special. With us this evening, we have Kristi Larson, who is the director for WE CAN. Kristi, would you please come and introduce yourself and tell us all about your organization, and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So my name is Kristi Larson, I'm the executive director at Western Communities Action Network, or WE CAN, located in Mound. And just a little background for those that might not know, WE CAN is a social service agency for the 12 cities that surround Mound, including Minutrista. We serve, we have a number of programs that serve low-income families in our area, including emergency assistance programs, which helps with rent or mortgage for family and crises, we have a jobs program where we help with employment and budgeting programs, a number of different food programs, including our mobile market, which is a mobile food shelf, as well as kids' food bag program, which provides bags of kid-friendly food to children during out-of-school times and throughout the summer. And we also have emergency assistance, or, I'm sorry, I said that already, family support programs, which you know and help out a lot with. So we just finished up our Ready to Learn School Supply Program, where we delivered about 240 backpacks filled with school supplies to children in need in the area. And right now, we are just in the midst of our Coat Drive, I handed out one of the flyers with that, where we take donations of new and gently-used coats, as well as hats and mittens, another winter wear, that we distribute in a few weeks to families that need it. A lot of those programs are really designed to help struggling families just stretch their budget, when they're, they have those extra types of things that they just can't make ends meet, and so, things like school supplies or coats. We have a year-round birthday shelf and a holiday gift program, so that just really helps these families stretch their budgets and pay for their necessities first. We also provide Meals on Wheels, that is a daily noontime meal, delivered hot by volunteers. So, we just have a whole bunch of different things going on over at WE CAN, and again, serving this area, as well as kind of the 12 cities all around, from St. Bonnie up to Rockford and then out to Tonka Bay, so if you can kind of get an idea of the geographic area that we serve. Everyone that we serve lives at or below 200% or below a federal poverty guidelines, so everyone that comes in does an intake with us to ensure that they meet our income qualifications, as well as our geographic qualifications. So, for those of you that might not know, for a family of four, that's just a little over $50,000 a year for 200% of poverty, so we're serving families at that level or below. So, really, a lot of families that are working, but maybe working part-time jobs, jobs with no benefits, seasonal jobs, and just really unable to make ends meet, so WE CAN really serves as a safety net for them, to keep them, you know, in their homes, out of the shelters, and just provide that stability for them. So, I passed out our annual report as well, so you can have some of the information about some of the programs and our numbers from last year. But I did just want to briefly touch on some of the numbers of clients that we served here in Minutrista. So, this is last year, so our fiscal year runs June through May, so this is from our last year. So in Minutrista, for our emergency assistance program, that's the emergency payment for rent or mortgage, we helped sell seven different residents. For our family support programs, so our Ready to Learn Program, Coat Drive, Adopt a Family, Birthday Shelf, we helped 39 different residents. For our food programs, including the Mobile Market and Kids Food Program, we helped 68 different residents. And for Meals on Wheels, we helped 13 different Minutrista residents. So obviously, there's still a need in your community, and WE CAN is happy to help support those that have nowhere else to turn, and so, we just really appreciate everything that the city has done to support our organization. We are primarily supported by the community, whether it be from individual donors, faith groups, service groups, businesses, so that is where we receive the majority of our funding. So we really appreciate all of the support and awareness that the city gives to us, so thank you so much.
Ms. Larson, can you just tell us if somebody would like to give to your organization, what is the best way to do that?
Sure.
And where would they go?
Yeah, so they can look on our website, it's WECANMN.org, so W-E-C-A-N-M-N.org, or they can call us, our number is 472-0742.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
You noted the people that were helped in the city, do you have similar stats on the volunteers that come from Minutrista?
I don't have them with me, but WE CAN pull them. Yep, so we rely really heavily on our volunteers, we have over 200 a year to help with our program, so I can definitely get that for you.
I do know that there's a number of residents that are very generous to WE CAN that are Minutrista residents, so.
Yes, definitely.
Yep, yep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for all the work that you do in the community, so greatly appreciated. So next, we have Mr. Patrick Devine with us, with the Waconia School District.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, and the council members, thanks for having me, city workers, audience, those online, thanks for letting me be here tonight. Always like to come once a year, kind of give a little update of what's going on in our school district. I know there's other school districts in Minutrista, so those local public schools, ISD 110, so it's always good to give an update. As you all know, so many may know this, but this is my fifth year here at ISD 110, and it's been a really good journey. One of the initiatives right away that I recognized was how we need to be one, and we even have a chant now, we are 110, so it's, kids have fumbled that, and I think our communities have, we branded it, and it was our inner brand, we have five swaths across the W, and they're for the five communities of Minutrista, in St. Bonnie, New Jersey, Victoria, and Waconia, so very proud to have all five communities in our school. Just wanted to update you a little bit about where we're at in our school, and then talk a little bit about operating levy, want to make sure that you're aware of that, for even those online that may need to know a little bit more of that information. Really find that it's important to go out and let the voters know what it's all about and why they're there and why we're asking, and this is actually presentation 57 for me, I'll do over 70 presentations, I feel like we're getting the information out to everybody, so hopefully this will help. But one other thing, I guess I'd like to say, is just one of the things to try to bring the district to be a little more inclusive, we did, I think you're well aware, we are now leasing the Catholic Church property for early childhood program and for before and after-school care.
In St. Bonnie?
In St. Bonnie.
Yep, I'd heard that.
So that helps make the drive down, and then the other thing is when we did the bomb breach for the new school, Lake Town Elementary, it's all the Minutrista, St. Bonnie, just a little bit of Waconia that has that in school, so I know that families really do love our new building, and we have a couple pictures of that. So I'll just talk a little bit about, when I was here four years ago, we had a building bond referendum, a $75 million dollar building bond referendum, we're finally at the end of those projects, last couple things, we cleaned up a wall on Southview, but probably the bigger one is the stadium. Stadium is now complete, we have some aesthetics to do with some sod, but other than that, we used it this last weekend, we had a double-digit section soccer games there, really exciting, they both came down in the shootout because they're in overtime, so that was kind of fun, we lost one, we won one, so really, really, stadium has turned out really nice, and we have 1,500 seats on one side and 500 on the other, a lot of spaces to stand around the edges, so feel really good about finishing up our high school campus. You see that kind of the top side is our high school campus. One of the big additions to our school district and our community is the 1,000-seat auditorium you see on the left there, just a beautiful auditorium, and we have a lot of outside action shows that come in, and our student action shows, so it's really functioning very well. The bottom picture is at Lake Town Elementary I talked about, beautiful buildings, working really well for our students. So, we built the spaces, spaces are working great, we added some functional furniture that the kids love to learn on, so spaces are working well, and we have room to grow now, we're very proud of it. So we moved on to, let's make sure our strategic planning was in good shape, so we did a new strategic roadmap, we call it, it's a three-year roadmap, and this is kind of the deliverables that we have asked students, staff, and parents what they would like as their daily experiences, and we use that to really drive our strategic planning, and we are using that now moving forward, and feel like our academic goals are in a place where we feel really good about where they're at. Our school itself is functioning very well, we know that we're providing a really good program for our kids, if you look at those stats out there, whether it's the 95% graduation rate, or it's 84% going post-secondary, 100% service learning is really something we're very proud of, every kid, every grade does some kind of service learning project. And then the 83% activity participation is kind of an unheard kind of percentage, so really, our kids are involved, they do a lot, we're running with really good programs. There is a report that came out last year, we're very proud of, the US News and World Report came out, we're the top 100 schools in every state, in the state of Minnesota, we're fourth, we're behind Loyzetta, Edina, Minutrista, and then Waconia. So we feel really proud of being ranked where we're at, we know we've delivered a good product, we have our buildings ready, our academics are going well, now it's just to make sure we have a budget to run that with, and this next video kind of really tells the highlights of that operating levy.
At Waconia Public Schools, when we say "we are 110," just exactly what does that mean? For starters, it means we're all in this together. In a recent community survey, 81% agreed that strong public schools equal a strong community. Over the past 30 years, we've grown together, and we've supported each other along the way. In 2014, voters said yes to a $75 million bond referendum. Funds from the referendum, which can only be used for buildings, not operating expenses, allowed Waconia Public Schools to create the facilities necessary to respond to growth. The result of our collective efforts is success, in the classroom, in the community, and in life. "We are 110" also means we build long-lasting relationships, we build trust. Year after year, Waconia Public Schools is recognized for financial reporting, receiving a national award for seven years running. The community also gives high marks, 77% are satisfied with the district's financial management. When it comes to operating expenses, state funding for school operations has not kept pace with inflation for the past several years. Many districts have made up for the funding gap by passing an operating levy. There's a wide range, but some communities have passed levies that offer support of nearly $2,000 per student. Waconia Public Schools currently has zero voter-approved operating levy dollars. To make up the difference, the district has been spending down the fund balance. Those funds will be depleted in the near future, and Waconia Public Schools must do one of three things: raise revenue, make cuts, or a combination of both. After considering the options, the school board made a unanimous decision to place an operating levy question on the November 6th ballot. If approved, the estimated tax impact on a $300,000 home would be about $23 per month. If the operating levy is approved, it would last for 10 years, providing critical funding to cover the gap, allowing Waconia Public Schools to maintain and enhance the high-quality educational programming that the community has come to expect. Much more information can be found on the website, and remember to vote on Tuesday, November 6th.
So that kind of gives the highlights of what the operating levy is all about, and some of the questions that I get are, you know, what happens if it passes, what happens if it doesn't pass, and when we look at what happens if it passes and approves, we're really, in fact, allowance here, she's one of our school board members, but also acting as a citizen tonight for a committee that she may want to say something at the end of this, but the school board was very conscious about not going out for too much taxation on our voters, and trying to keep it down as low as they could, so really, it's to maintain. We have a deficit right now, our deficit spending is about 2.1 million, and this $525 amount per kid will give us 2.2 million, so it's really only about $100,000 difference between what we need and what our deficit spending is. So what would it do if it passed, it would allow us to maintain, we feel like we're a moving quality school, we want to maintain that. We are doing some other initiatives that we want to continue to support, things like partnerships with businesses, so that kids can get authentic learning. We want to strengthen our student support system, make sure that that continues, many know that there's a mental health crisis kind of across the nation, we're seeing some of that in schools too, we want to continue to support that. We want to provide the voice and choice and personalized learning for students, that's initiatives, again, across the nation, a lot of schools are doing, we've started that, we want to continue that initiative, where the kids get to show how they know their content in the way they want to show it. And then, we talked about the strategic roadmap, we want to continue our goals from there, and then, as you, when you have a budget that's on the positive side, things, you can look at new programs, new activity programs, and new academic programs as needed, so we want to continue with that. What would happen if it didn't pass? Well, as we know, as I just said, it's $2.1 million of deficit spending that we have to cut. Our operating budget is mainly personnel, it's 85% personnel, so if you take 85% of that 2.1 in personnel, that's a lot of people. It'd be a lot of cuts, that means that we staff it across teachers, administrative, support staff, the class sizes we go up, we have to eliminate or reduce some of our athletics and extracurriculars, we have to look at how much role language, music in our programs we can offer, and then we have to increase student fees, so we would look a lot different if we had to reduce by $2.1 million. But we know we have, with school, things are going well, we just want to continue that process, and we know that the board members are very respectful for what we go out, and we've been kind of waiting for a long time, we couldn't went out earlier, but they said, let's spend down the fund balance, so we absolutely have to, and it really becomes a local decision, a local decision, as others in the area have really said, this is what we do locally, we go out and ask our locals, can we help to keep our good school program? And now we're at a position where we're doing the same, and we're doing, we'll do feels of respect and love, so. That's pretty much what operating levy is all about, you know, maybe there's questions or thoughts?
Any questions? Thorough presentation, so.
Yeah, like I said, I've been through this a few times, I think I have all them down pretty well. We've been offering a real lean budget for a long time, but it's time we need to do something, or it's going to be, it's going to look different. I don't know, would you like to say anything, if she could, or is that okay?
Sure, yeah, couple minutes here.
Yeah.
Thank you, the mayor and the city council. I am here on behalf of the vote yes committee for our district, and I'm a parent, and I've lived in Waconia for about seven years, and the district is one of the reasons why we chose to move to Waconia, for the good schools and the great community and surrounding communities, so we're encouraging parents and community members to welcome vote yes on November 6th.
Thank you, all right.
I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor and the council again, when we come here, we've built so long, so thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we have, I think, four or five, four, at least four school districts within our school, within our boundaries, so it's always nice to connect. So, that concludes our very special presentations, but we do have one more special presentation.
At least the presentation.
Not as exciting, but very important nonetheless, so, Mr. Grimm.
Yes, thanks. Madam mayor and council, this information's in your packet, starting on page three, I won't, I don't have any handouts or PowerPoints, but it's just the basic update for the third quarter here, so everything seems to be tracking well as we're going through the first nine months of the year. I did try to notate on the memo on page three that our revenues are actually a little higher than, when you compare to last year at this time, they're about 64% of our budget versus 59 last year. The main reason is, and it took me a second to figure it out, when the first half tax settlement came in, is a lot of people pre, or I should say, not a lot, but some people prepaid their taxes in 2017 based on the tax law changes and stuff at the federal level, so I think, I think you'll see on the revenue sheet, I think we've collected 60% of our tax revenue already, you know, versus, usually we get about 50.
Fifty, yeah.
So probably even out as we get to year-end, but just wanted to at least highlight that or notate, seeing that was a little different from previous years, that people were jumping to pay their property taxes or whatever, which, you know, was more for them, as they filed their taxes or whatever, so. On the expenditure report, most things are tracking as expected as well. The expenditures are about 71% year-to-date, basically through the third quarter here, about the same percent as last year. The one item I did want to note is that the county assessing services, that was paid on October 1st, so that didn't show up in the September report, but that has been paid, so you'll see that. And then our, you know, we attached on page 10, our current cash and investment total, so you'll see that, there's just a couple funds with cash deficits based on timing differences, so. Otherwise, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the specific pages of the report, the revenue guidelines on page four, and then the expenditure was page five through nine of the packets, so.
I had a quick question, on page nine.
Okay.
Cultural and Recreation, there's, what is that?
That's the, our contract with the Gillespie Center, so we pay them $34,000 a year, it's to help them with, basically, it's, they set up an endowment that ourselves, Mound, Spring Park, are contributing to their endowment fund, so that hopefully, in, I think we're in the fifth or sixth year.
No, they have three, you have three more years.
Three years, okay, six or seven, or whatever, of the contract, so after that, they should be able to be, I guess, more self-sustaining and not have to come to like, the cities in the area and ask for contribution, or dollar contribution. We used to give more, a few thousand a year, and they came to us, probably six, seven years ago, and said.
I think the contract was signed in 2011.
2011, yeah, so, so it's basically, it's a 10-year contract, they have the annual contribution of the $34,000, so, and it's certainly, obviously, to take us to support. It was, it's basically, I suppose, an area cultural center, so that's.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yep, yep. So we'll have that last payment to make in December for the other $17,000, yep.
And I also had a question on the revenue side.
Okay, yep, page four, yep.
The crime levy ISD, is that still anticipated, or is it?
Yep, that comes usually at the end of October, I believe, or end of October, early November, so that, we should get that, what do we have, budget, $45,000, I believe? Yep, that should be coming, yep.
Okay, okay. And just a few lines down from there, under other, what is included in other?
The other is, the majority of that is our cellphone tower rent, the like Verizon and T-Mobile and some of those companies, they pay us usually towards the end of the year for putting stuff on our towers for their, basically, technology and, you know, telecommunications, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so.
We have a contract with them.
Contracts with, yep.
Should that be identified? Especially if we get into, there are things that are going to be happening in the future with cellphone towers and small cell wireless, and it might be nice to identify that.
Yeah, we could, yeah, I guess it was, we could do any of that, I suppose, put it on its own line item, I think right now, it's just going in there with a couple other smaller things, but that is the majority of that line item, so that, we could do that, that's fine, yep.
Okay, and just the last one is the bottom of that page.
I'm sorry, which page? I'm sorry, what?
Page four.
Four, okay.
Operating tran, what is that?
Oh, the operating transfer, so that is dollars that's going to come over from the project fund on the 2017 projects, for the Enchanted and Halsted, to transfer out of that fund to go into the general fund for basically all the time that we've had for, basically an admin charge to sort of recoup, you know, staff time that we've put into that project or whatever, so that's, that's going to be showing up there here, that transfer we made, and that comes to council to approve the transfer and the budgeted transfer, so, but that's what that's for.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, this is just informational purposes, so we don't have to take any action on it, but thank you, Brian, for that update, always good to know. So, next, we're under persons to be heard, and Mr. Devine already spoke, so he's signed up, but he already spoke. We'll move on to consent agenda items. We have consisting of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from October 1st, B is approve our regular meeting minutes from October 1st, C is a resolution to approve claims, D is a resolution to certify delinquent utilities to 2019 taxes, E is a resolution to certify delinquent land use special fees to 2019 taxes, and F is to approve encroachment agreement for MCWD in Highland Road right-of-way. Any questions or removals, otherwise, a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F as read?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those approved? All those opposed? No one, because all four said yes. Motion passes four oh with one absent. So, next, we move on to our public hearings, which we have none, so we will move on to our business items. Our first business item is approve a professional services agreement and authorize the preparation of feasibility study for the 2019 street projects. Ms. Fousky.
Thank you, Madam mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, for your consideration is approval of a professional services agreement to prepare a feasibility study and design services, plans and specifications for a street project. So council may recall, back in September, at a work session, we had a discussion with regards to the 2019 street improvement project, which includes some streets that were originally bid in 2018, and those bids were rejected, so those, those streets would be included in this street project, so there is a little bit of time built into this professional services to bring those streets into the plan set, but the bulk of these fees relates to the design services necessary for the street improvements. Included in the proposed project is melon overlay of several streets, as indicated in the staff report, as well as some reclamation of Kristen Lane to Shane, Lane and Shane Circle. As council may recall, with the assessment policy of reclamation projects, a portion of that project cost is assessed, so there are some assessment preparation services included in the professional services agreement. The proposed costs are outlined on the second page of the staff report, this represents the 2018 pricing plus 15%, as there's been some discussion as what we'll see for bidding prices, so I just wanted to present to council one of the budget scenarios that we had indicated. Certainly with this feasibility study, if approved, an opinion of probable cost will be prepared for the council's consideration based on what we saw later on this year with some bidding, so we will have some good discussions with the council, I would anticipate at that time, as far as what those anticipated project costs are. as far as what those anticipated project costs are. With that, presented a schedule back in September as far as looking at proceeding with the, with the project, with the anticipation of getting a spring start on this project. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
I know we've discussed it numerous times at, at work sessions, the projects themselves, so I think we're all on board there, for the time being anyway. We'll see what the numbers come in at. Any other questions?
The, the letter from WSB does indicate the proposed construction of the improvements is estimated to be seven hundred and fifty, and that's over what I'm comfortable with, so I'm, I just wanted to let you know I'm not going to be voting for this, because it's money that we haven't approved yet to spend for 2019.
Well, and that's part of the problem. If we wait until January or February to start work on these projects for next year, then we're behind the eight ball. So, we're not approving, we're not approving the projects, we're approving the, the work to be done to figure out how much the projects will cost.
Right. And from my, from my perspective, there's, there are too many projects listed here, and it goes back to the preliminary tax levy increase and the four hundred thousand in the, in the street maintenance fund, or the four seventy-five that other council members approve, so.
So, you don't want to approve any streets, then?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying I can't approve this, because it's too high.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Another question. So, we, our next, not to jump ahead, but I want to draw parallel here. Our next business item is going to look at the professional service agreement for the eighteen Influent Infiltration Project. And within that, it's noted on the fiscal impacts, how much, this is a similar situation, and this is why I'm bringing up the parallel, where in both cases, we decided not to move forward the eighteen projects due to cost. And in the second proposal, it's noted here about, of the ten thousand approximately, how much is for basically the eighteen work, which is twenty-three fifty-three, and about eighty-four hundred is for the new stuff. I'd kind of like to get an idea of what we're looking at for breakdown on the sixty-two thousand or sixty-three thousand on this project, as to how much this pertains to eighteen stuff versus nineteen, because I thought we did a lot of work on eighteen already. So, I'm a little confused as to how much of this is new and how much have we already paid for.
That's an excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Mulliter. I don't have the breakdown in front of me. I can certainly circle back with the council, and in future staff reports have that included. There's a certain amount of effort that is necessary to bring in the previous design work into the plan set, but the, the dollar amount presented to the council represents the work necessary to prepare the feasibility study for the streets that would be included in an assessment for a four-twenty-nine process, and then design of those reclamation streets, which tends to be a little more time-intensive versus a regular edge mill and overlay, as there's, there's some minor modifications as far as if there's an opportunity to improve some drainage, for example. So, it certainly has a little bit more design effort, but I don't have that number for the council at this time.
So, Mr. Mulliter, you would like the numbers, what we paid last year for the, for the 2018 project?
Well, a lot of the stuff we have slated for 2018.
Right.
And, and perhaps staff or someone can refresh my memory, but I thought we had already purchased services from WSB before that was, for that, that's how we got the bids, right? We had to, we had to put together what the requirements are to get the bids, and we got the bids. So, I would think that the design work is already done.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to get a bid.
Right.
So, now we're looking at another sixty-three thousand, okay? So, in my mind, that's got to be all for the stuff that we didn't consider for 2018. And I just want to get some affirmation that that's true or not, because when I look at what we've got here, a lot of the stuff, and I'm just looking at the expense that is listed here, and a lot of this is originally in the two thousand, three hundred thousand, and this is already two hundred, 2018 project. And then we've got some mill and overlay, which, as was pointed out, isn't quite as intensive in terms of what we need to do. So, I just, I just have the, it seems to me like we're paying twice in some respect. And without knowing how much is for what, I'm not real clear as to how much of this did we already pay for last year.
I think what's before us tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fowski, is for the 2019 projects, for the design and, and bidding package for the 2019 projects, there may be a slight increase or small amount to add in all the work that was done last year for the 2018 projects, but not very much. And that's what I don't think Ms. Fowski knows the answer to, how much of the sixty-two, sixty-three is for the 2018 to add that in. The, the design work has been done, and, and the bidding, and the bidding documents have been done.
Right.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. So, there's, there's some additional effort to, for the work that's been done to date, there's some effort required to bring that into the plan set, so you have one bid package available for the bidder. And then also, it's an economy of scale, but you'll be rebidding the project for, for the 2018, but then including the 2019 component. So, however the council would view that as far as a duplicative effort, but you have, whether these additional streets were added into the project, you would still have bidding services necessary if you were only rebidding those 2018 streets.
Does, does that make sense, or?
Well, it makes sense. I just don't know how much of the sixty-three thousand is related to that or not, because, you know, when I look at the project area, I know that Burl Oaks, both of those, I believe, all of these, well, the first, the three hundred thousand that's listed on page fifty-two, that we've already paid for all that. So, I think, you know, yeah, we have to update the bid package, but I would suspect it'd be relatively small. So, then that tells me we must be paying for what's in the reclamation bucket. Is that, I'd like to know if that's true or how much of a split this is. So, if we're paying sixty-three thousand mainly for a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollar project, I'm a little concerned.
Sure, I understand, yeah. But, we're paying, it's more than that, it's, they're saying, oh, I see what you're saying. It's two-thirty-five plus one-thirty-four plus eighty. No, we had, I'm sorry, we had the parking lot in last year.
Right.
Oxy Oak Circle, we didn't have in.
Right, but her comment on that was that, that doesn't take as much engineering service because it's mill and overlay. You don't have as much going on.
Sure. Right.
So, that's why I'm concerned about what we're looking at for numbers here. It seems like an awful lot for a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollar project, and a little bit more here and there.
Two, three, three sixty-nine, three sixty-nine, yeah. It's both. It's a mill and overlay and, and the reclamation.
Yeah.
So, what would you like?
I guess I'd like to see some breakdown as to what, you know, I find it kind of odd that the next resolution that's before us is broken down, and this one isn't, and this is the bigger one. So, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more detail what that sixty-three thousand is behind us.
Sure. So, my question would be, where does that put us in terms of a timetable? Because we don't have another meeting until November thirteenth.
That's an excellent question. We did factor in a slight buffer on the schedule in the matter of approximately two weeks, so that would push us to about a two or three week later start, depending on when the bidding, the council meetings in the spring, not looking at the schedule, but looking at the council meeting schedule for the spring. That might put us two to three weeks out on getting a project awarded.
And I know we wanted to get going on it sooner than later, so that we could get into that more favorable bidding season of, of March. I think it was February, March, we wanted to be out for bids. Is that timeframe?
That's correct. We wanted to get bids, we wanted to get the project out for bid in, I believe we had March was our goal.
Okay. So, if we delay this till November thirteenth, would that, how, would that still get us into that March bidding season?
We might be late March, early April. I'd, I'd have to take a look at the schedule, but I, I think we would still find some favorable bids at that time, and be on a, on a schedule that's more in line with what the council wanted to see as far as a spring start.
Okay. Well, council, what is your pleasure here?
I tend to agree with Mike on this one. I see that all, a lot of these projects were already out, and I'd like to see that number before.
Okay. I mean, I suppose we could have a special meeting in two weeks. I'm just a little bit reluctant to do that, but, so I guess what I'd like to do is, I'd like to find out, because when I hear end of March, beginning of April, I start to, to worry a bit, because that's kind of where we were at before. And then it seems like because of meeting schedules and so on, that sometimes it gets delayed till mid-April, and then by the time the projects are let, it's, it's June. I, I'm just a little worried about this. So, in terms of timing, I want to put us in that most favorable position. So, if need be, I'm fine leaving this, but if need be, then we may have to have a special meeting if you want to make sure that we get into that March timeframe, unless staff can come up with another idea.
Madam Mayor, council, well, with hearing the reluctance from a couple of council members here about the timing, but also the cost, I think maybe our best bet is to, even though I'm sure people to my right aren't going to be that happy about, but I think maybe we should probably look at maybe a separate meeting, maybe on this topic only on the twenty-ninth. It would seem to be a long agenda if this is one of the few items out there. I wouldn't want to turn it into a full-blown council meeting as far as everything else. We may have some bills to pay or whatever, we could do it that way. We typically have, like for claims, have done when we have a gap that's coming up, like the way they have coming up.
Well, let me ask you something. Well, let me ask you something. Since this would be, okay, so let's just say, this is the only thing. It seems like it's just a matter of flushing out some numbers. Could this be done on next, is it the twenty-second? What is next Monday?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second versus waiting till, whatever, the twenty-ninth? And would that be enough time to post the meeting? Yes, it would be, because it's seventy-two hours.
I would certainly have enough time to have that available. However, that evening, I do have a conflict.
Okay. I know, I know it's planning commission meeting. I know that. I was going to suggest we meet at five o'clock, so that we're done and out of here before then. I'm trying to also, or six o'clock or whatever, make sure that we don't have to have staff here too many evenings, too. So, Ms. Fowski, could, could somebody else be here for that, then?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll get this all straightened out for the council and have the information presented in the format that the council would, would like to see it.
So, council, what is your pleasure?
I guess, I'm having a real hard time with this, because with no disrespect to you, Ms. Fowski, we've had a lot of issues with WSB, and, you know, again, I don't want to bring this all to you, but this is the kind of stuff that should have been addressed beforehand. And now, we've got to make our schedule work to try to get this answered. I would prefer to take this up on our next meeting and make up the timeframe, make it up, make it back up in the preceding, the following months.
Okay, that's fine. But here's, in all due respect, and I'm going to say this very respectfully, we got our packets on Thursday, we reviewed it, and these are exactly the kind of questions that should be asked. Had they been asked this morning or this afternoon, staff could have brought these numbers to us. So, just review the packet a little more thoroughly and write your, your questions down, so that they could maybe come with, with these answers.
The reason why I didn't do that is because this is a public meeting, and we're going to talk about this publicly. And this is not a question that I expect Mr. Verone to answer.
I understand that.
So, I, I want to have this meeting and have this discussion here. I do read the packet. I read it thoroughly.
I'm not, I'm saying, but these are the kind of question, so that they can come back with the answer.
So, I stand by my statement.
Okay. All right. Well, so, you want to come back on the thirteenth?
I think we need to come back to look at those numbers. Whether we wait for the thirteenth or the twenty-second, either is fine.
And I'm voting against it anyway, so it doesn't matter what I think.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with either, either the twenty-second or the thirteenth. I just simply don't want to get behind the eight ball, and I don't think that, yeah.
So, the thirteenth is a scheduled meeting?
Correct.
Correct.
That would be my preference.
All right. Well, you, you would be invited to the meeting.
Sure. I would prefer to have it be a scheduled meeting.
Okay.
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth. All right. So, we will then discuss this at the regular council meeting on the thirteenth, and, and bring back those, those numbers. All right. Okay, so moving on to the next item, which is professional services agreement and authorized preparation for the bids for the 2018 INI improvement projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, previously, Influent Infiltration improvements throughout the city, plans were prepared and bid and came in over budget. The proposal before you this evening is to go and take that work and incorporate it into a plan set with adjacent communities, Tonka Bay, Excelsior, and Shorewood, in the effort to create a larger plan set, a larger project that would be more, that contractors would look on more favorably, with the anticipation of getting lower unit prices and getting a, a successful lower bid project in for the city of Minatrista. So, included in the packet is, is a breakdown, as Councilmember Mulliter previously indicated, it does include a breakdown between design, which includes bringing the, the existing work into the plan set, and then also, as mentioned with the previous item, that there would be some time and effort in place for bidding to prepare for the city's share of the bidding services associated with the project. And it also includes construction services. I did take a look at the previous proposal that the council approved when this project was originally approved for design and for professional services, and verified that the construction services proposed is, is under what the council approved previously. So, we are in line with what we looked at, what the council looked at when originally bidding out the project. If approved this evening, we would provide WSB the go-ahead to include those plans for bidding, and would be bringing the plan set forward to the council at the appropriate time for bidding purposes, and then also successful bids, hopefully, for consideration. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council have questions?
Yeah, I do, of course. First of all, thank you for providing the breakout here. That does help. Question I have is, I believe with these same cities or similar cities, we have done a similar type of approach with our seal coating projects. And there was noted this year, when we rejected the seal coating by your predecessor, Paul, that it may be to our benefit not to be part of that group of going out for bid. So, you know, again, it's, that was a statement, I believe, Paul had made. So, hate to put this on you, but it seems a little bit, I, I don't doubt the approach, but I'm just, it's a little bit contradictory to say we could be benefiting in this case by going out to bid with them, but in other cases, it wouldn't be in the seal coating. Can you speak to that a little bit? I know you weren't here and then made that statement. I know it's Paul's statement. So, if you can just do the best you can with that.
Well, knowing some of the challenges with seal coat projects, when you start looking at getting a very large pool of, of cities in with a seal coat project, you start spreading that contractor thin, and if you come against weather, like you can with it, with a, with a construction project, a delay- a delay in one city now carries over in other cities. So that, perhaps that's one reason that Engineer Hornby had looked at that recommendation. Whereas with this type of project, the Kirdin Place lining is, is a, because of its, it's, it's not weather-dependent.
Right.
You have folks that can go in there, get the work done. It's, it's really well-established as far as looking at the confines of what work needs to be done. You have known quantities. It, it usually doesn't vary very much as far as what work you're doing in there. So this one, when, when it's being presented to a contractor is, the extent of that, that contract is a lot better defined than perhaps a seal coat with weather and other, other variations that can come into implementing the contract. That's what comes to the top of my mind when looking at this versus a seal coat project.
I do remember Mr. Hornby telling us that, you know, that we had done this joint bidding for seal coating on a number of years. In prior years, it worked out into our benefit. And then for some reason or other, this year, it didn't. And he did say, usually it works out better. This year, for some reason or other, it didn't. It could be, be maybe because there was more seal coating or something. It was a larger project. And maybe for what Ms. Fowski just said is the reason it didn't work out.
Okay.
How much do we save by doing something like this, by putting it together?
Well, certainly you would have the economy of scale with, with regards to the, the bidding services, because you're now, you're now splitting that cost amongst the other communities. And there's also some efficiencies realized with construction observation, because you have an individual that's already, for example, say, in Excelsior. And the time for him or her to move from Excelsior to Minotrista isn't a, a trip generated from Golden Valley or St. Paul. So you have some efficiencies from that perspective as well.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion then to approve the professional services agreement for the, and a preparation of ads and bids for the 2018 INI improvement projects?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for O. Four, yeah, one absent. So now we move on to administrative items. I'm going to ask, real quick, Ms. Lindquist, could you just, for our audience, both here and at home later on, on YouTube, give us kind of the times and dates for early voting? I know it used to be called absentee voting, so early voting dates and times, where they can vote, and, and so on.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, actually, it is still considered in-person absentee. Early voting is something else, and that does not take place in Minnesota.
Okay.
Well, for Minotrista residents, we are open at City Hall here every day from 8:00 to 4:00. And that will be through, up until the Saturday before voting. And on Saturday, November 3rd, we will be here from 10:00 to 3:00 at City Hall for in-person absentee. Also, Monday, November 5th, we will be open until 5:00 PM. So people can come in to vote prior to election day. On election day, the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the four polling locations we have. One does happen to be City Hall, but in-person absentee will no longer be part of that. If you want information of where to vote, you can go out to the Secretary of State's website, Hennepin County website. We also have it available on our city website. Or you can contact City Hall, and we'll be able to assist anyone with their questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we have city administrator staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I just got a couple of items. As you have heard through the discussion on a couple of business items, our next council meeting is on Tuesday, November 13th. That's kind of a unique day for us. Generally, this city has first and third Mondays. It's been our practice in previous years to not hold the council meeting on the first Monday of election years, because it's the day before the election. And then we've tried a couple of times to move that one meeting from the first to the second Monday, but then you end up having council meetings a week apart. So this year, we're a little bit more proactive, and we said, let's shoot for the second Monday and split the one, week one and week three, and go with the second Monday and meet on that day. But that's, it was a bit of a curveball this year, because Veterans Day is actually Sunday, and so it gets observed on Monday. So our second Monday meeting now is second Tuesday. So, long story, but that's why we're meeting on the 13th, just so people in the audience and watching understand. One other item, so that's four weeks and a day away. And then the final item, I, just a reminder that there is a Police Advisory Commission meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. So Chief Falls and Mayor Waylon, I will be participating in that.
Okay. And then we have city engineer update. I'm assuming Halsted and Enchanted.
Yes, that's part of my, my update for this evening. So just to provide the council with an update on where we're at with some construction projects. Halsted, the contractor was out today getting some work completed. They have gravel and black dirt for the boulevard restoration and driveway restoration out there. They anticipate about four days' worth of work. So we are hopeful that they will be out here every day and finish in a timely fashion. We will certainly keep on them as best we can to keep the, the progress going. Another project I wanted to update the council on was Enchanted Lane. Valley Contracting indicated that they will be out on Wednesday to begin work again. They did get some guardrail in last week, but the rain certainly delayed them from, from getting started last week. So they anticipate again to be out on Wednesday. A couple of development projects that I'd like to just give a brief update on. One is Ponds at Hunter's Crest. The curb is in with paving to follow hopefully shortly. I don't have a date for that one. And the utility trenches, trenches have been patched. I understand the front desk has had some calls as far as the, the abrupt change in the, in the pavement thickness, and that will be remedied when the final lift of, final layer of asphalt goes in out there. The other one that I would like to provide the council an update on is Woodland Cove 3rd Edition. The first lift, first layer of pavement has been installed with the Met Council forced main across County-Stated Highway 44. And the ditch grading will continue through that corridor. However, it was delayed from the rain again. So that's what I have for the council for construction updates. And if there's any other updates that I can provide with the council, I'd be happy to do so, as to my ability.
Well, this might be, David, are you keeping tabs? I'm assuming you are, on Red Oak? You know, we're trying to get them to finish out the temporary COs and expired ones. Are we moving along there?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. The report was that four yards had sod placed today. One was partially placed, and that there are five that are prepped to have sod laid tomorrow and the next day.
Okay. Do you know what that will bring, bring it to in terms of completion? Because I know we had like, what, 12 outstanding?
Yeah, that'll, well, you mean, yeah, you've got five of them total, four done today, one partial, and then there's five that are prepped.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I know they wanted to try and get all of them done by the middle of October. So maybe because of the weather, not all, well, they all get done, let's say, before the end of October, do you know?
But before snow flies, is their intent, yes.
Okay, all right.
As long as weather will allow them, yes.
Okay. All right.
And we're still holding, we still have not given the $26,000 back to them, so we're still holding that escrow.
Okay.
Per, per the council's direction.
Yep, okay. And that, there was a fourth, that fourth one is what you're holding out for, right? And then they'll be coming back for the other five later on?
Well, the goal is not, we're not handing out temporary COs.
There you go. Good job. All right. All right, thank you.
Just another, other thing, Madam Mayor and council, I do need someone to attend the next week, Monday, the October 22nd Planning Commission.
Yeah, I'll be there. Yep. Okay. Okay, so, let's see, that engineer, anybody else, any other staff?
Madam Mayor, I also had included in the packet for the council's information
Hold on just a minute.
a petition that was received by residents on Wood Edge Road requesting a street project in their area for 2019. To provide the council a little bit more background, the currently, Wood Edge is currently a gravel road. In discussions with Public Works Director Peters, he said in this area that the, the gravel road is in a condition such that it's not conducive for simply just paving over the existing gravel. It would require some more, some more work if the council would like to entertain including this in a, in a five-year capital improvement plan. And if so, I will, I wanted to, I'll also clarify on the petition. There was one individual that discussed that there would be no cost for any preliminary design if the council would like me to pursue this app, this application, or pardon me, this petition. I would get some clarification as to whether or not all the signatories on the petition echo the, the sentiments of the gentleman who signed on number four with regards to upfronting some of the costs.
How many, how many total properties are on that road?
Um, I, I, I'm not certain of the total count. I believe it's about a dozen.
And this is seven, seven properties signed the petition?
That's correct.
There are 10 people, but seven properties.
Correct.
Well, I think maybe we should bring this back at our next meeting. It's, it's certainly not on our schedule for 2019 and even 2020. So I think we'd have to have a little more discussion in terms of if it goes on when. I know we've had people on other streets asking for improvements, so where this would fall. The other thing, though, with it being a gravel road, being converted to a bituminous, really, there would be assessments. So if nothing else, I think the residents would have to be aware that there would be assessments. We don't know what they would be. So with that in mind, are they still interested in pursuing, pursuing this? Understand that it would be great not having a gravel road in front of your house, but this is typically something we do assess for. So should staff maybe send a letter? I'm, I'm not sure where to...
A potential would be the individual that dropped off the petition did leave a phone number, so I can certainly contact that individual based on the council feedback this evening and see if there's additional information that I can provide to the council.
I mean, it certainly isn't in our budget for 2019. And right now, it's not on our radar screen for 2020 as well. So whether we want to put it on for a future year, that would be something to, for us to discuss.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So this is for Ron. What, can you remind us what obligations we have once this petition has been presented to us?
None.
Okay. I, I thought there was some, maybe some review of the 429 as relevant to this.
No, Madam Mayor and council, you're not under obliga, any obligation to do anything. I think as a matter of courtesy, I agree with the city engineer, there should be some response. But you're not obligated to add it to a capital improvement plan. You're not obligated to do anything. It's simply a request. The two things that I, I would point out, just to keep in mind tonight or on the 13th, if that's when you're going to discuss it, for petitions, there are two different thresholds. One is a 35% threshold, but it's not people.
It's front.
It's frontage along the road. So it's hard to know seven out of 12 whether that meets the requirement or not. In other words, you have to look at the, the lot frontage of each of those people and add those up to see if they need 35% of the frontage. All that does is mean that an improvement project that would otherwise require four votes would now only be, require three votes. So you could approve a project by a simple majority rather than the extraordinary majority. Again, you're not required to do anything. The other threshold on petitions is 100% petition. And, and in that case, people would be petitioning for the project and agreeing to be assessed 100%. If they do that, and if you get the 100%, then you don't have to have the improvement hearing or the assessment hearing. You can just approve a project, and the whole cost of that is assessed to those folks. We're not there yet, obviously.
Right, yeah.
Those are the numbers to keep in mind.
Okay, that, thank you. That was, that was the background I was looking for. I probably stated that improperly, but you got the gist of what I was asking. On that second, so I think 35% frontage, they may or may not be there. But on the second component, is that something that in our conversation with the homeowners, we want to bring that up? Because I, I don't know, if, if there's only a dozen people in, or, I don't know, 10, 12 landowners and seven sign, there, there's a possibility they could get to 100%. And if they do get to 100%, I think we should let them know that, okay, if you do get to 100%, we could do this, but then it would be 100% assessed to you. Just, I'm not saying that we're going to go down and, and do that or anything like that, but just to let them know a little bit of what Ron just explained to us, so that they have an idea that says, hey, you can have everybody sign up 100%, but, and if you really want to get it done, you'd be 100% assessed. I don't, I suspect that's not what they want, but at least let them know that that's what 429 tells us.
I can certainly communicate that.
Probably you're not going to get 100% because one gentleman has already said he's not in favor of assessments.
Know that that's, that's the law. I mean, that's how it's written, so.
And that may be one way to jump in front of the line. I mean, the council might be more inclined to put this on a capital improvement plan or earlier if it weren't going to cost the city anything.
Right.
Right.
Speculating.
Yeah, exactly. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Did you have a question or?
Yeah, I had another question on a previous item that Ms. Fowski brought up. On the Enchanted project, and I could be getting my projects mixed up here, but I thought Valley had committed to a 1015 completion date. Obviously, we're, that's now gone, and regardless of that, given that they're going back out again on the 17th, Wednesday, do we have an idea of what their new target date is or the target date?
They indicated about 15 working days. So that puts us into November, and I, I can check on the completion date. I had in, in my notes that, that they were looking at an October 31st completion prior to the rain. But I can certainly follow up with the council at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which at that point, we're hopefully finished.
Right.
I, I recall, too, the October 31st date with the, with that last change order that came, you know, there was the boat launch and stuff. But I think they were, I think Valley was pushing for into November. And I think we held it until October 31st, but obviously, it still sounds like it's, yeah.
And the boat launch hasn't even been done, been touched, so.
Hence my question. That's why it's like, starting to get nervous. It snowed this weekend.
We all are, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So that concludes our staff reports. We'll move on to council reports. I'm going to start at the fore end. Ms. Bruce, do you have any reports?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And then Mr. Molitor?
None for me either.
None, and Ms. Mortensen?
I do. I attended the WCC meeting last week, and they are going to have the tree lighting on November 17th. And they just wanted to post something on our website if possible, because there are a lot of Minotrista residents that do enjoy that. And then we had a speaker from Special Olympics. Her name was Molly Egan. And they have a very exciting upcoming fundraiser called Polar Plunge. And they're doing it right on Surfside Park Beach. And last year, they raised 3.5 million, 13,000 participants in Minnesota. They're looking for 800 people.
To jump in and icy water. Yeah, right.
So.
I think you can also donate.
Yes, you can.
You can donate if you don't want to plunge.
What they're going to do, too, if you change your mind, they are going to give you a chicken.
Chicken. You can throw the chicken in the water. Yep, I heard that.
Mount event is going to be on January 16th, or 26th.
You're too chicken to jump in.
They donate volunteers, and I'm working with Cassandra on getting this posted on our website as well.
And just to clarify, social media. We'll do social media for our community events that might be of interest to our, as applicable. So we just take a look at them as they come in.
Yeah, great, thanks. Good. So a couple of things. Coming up, November 29th is at the, at Brookview in Golden Valley is the annual LMC slash Metro Cities meeting. And information, they have a couple of really good presentations. a couple of really good presentations on community engagement, and also a good presentation on conflict in local government and how to work together to more effective governing and problem solving. So those, I think, are two really good presentations. And then, of course, they'll be voting on their, their platforms. So that is on November 29th. If you would like to go, let Cassandra know so she can sign you up. And the other thing is also on October 25th, I don't know if any of you got the invitation, but the, the new senior citizen home community, senior community living is going to have an open house.
Harrison Bay.
Harrison.
Harrison Bay, thank you. Ribbon Cutting. And, let's see, I attended the Gillespie Board Meeting on October 11th. On October 10th, I also attended the Northwest League. The speaker informed us about the role of the Hennepin County Attorney, and so what the role is and how the attorney can influence policies at the Capitol and so on. So a lot of discussion on that. Interesting because you don't hear too much about what the role of a Hennepin, of what a county attorney is. And then tomorrow morning, of course, the public safety meeting coming up. So that's all I have for now. So with that, that concludes all of our agenda items. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all.